It's been working, the outreach.
This is a special meeting?
Yes.
The outreach is working.
Want to call the special meeting of the Salem Housing Authority for August 22nd to order? City Recorder, please call and roll.
Commissioner Tesler?
Present.
Commissioner Nanki?
Here.
Commissioner Claussen is absent. Commissioner Dickey?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Cannon?
Yes.
Commissioner Clem?
Here.
Chair Bennett?
Here. Will you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Nanki, I need a motion to approve the special meeting agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move the agenda for the special meeting of the Salem Housing Authority for August 22nd.
Second. Second. Second by Cannon. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. This is the point on the agenda for public comment, and I can tell hundreds of you are here to talk about Salem Housing Authority, so you just line up at the podium. Or, is this it? Or, apparently no one wants to talk to us about the Housing Authority, so we'll just move along to our action item. Commissioner Nanki, would I make a motion on the action item?
Yes, I would move staff recommendation on action item 4A.
Second.
Second by Tesler. Any discussion?
Excuse me for just a second. If I could just ask our staff member, was there a change on this one with the effective date? Oh, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Andy, we'll have your management report on the Salem Housing Authority budget overview.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioners. This is our first opportunity to talk with you about the budget at any level of detail. I've provided you with a hard copy of the PowerPoint presentation as well as the budget document that I know you haven't had a chance to look at, but certainly want to make myself available to you over the next three-week period to answer any questions you might have about the budget at a level of detail or at a macro level. Tonight I have a brief overview of the budget document, the 2011-2012 S.H.A. budget. Let me begin by just saying that, as you know, almost 93% of all S.H.A.-funded funds are regulated based upon federal regulations for particular use, and so there's not a lot of discretion with the S.H.A. budget. Regulated use by funding, properties not included in this budget that you will see, there are managed properties, and there are tax credit partnership properties that are not in this S.H.A. budget. Those include the Inglewood East and Hawthorne House managed properties, as well as the Parkway Village and South Fair Apartments, two tax credit projects that we're the limited partner in a tax credit partnership. This budget is a zero-based budget with the intent of serving 3,514 individuals through the various programs and projects this next coming year. And finally, the budget provides support to new program clients such through the VAS project-based project, tenant-based vouchers, family unification program vouchers, and so we're expanding the nature of the clients and the nature of the resources that we bring to bear on behalf of our clients. The budget timeline can be kind of convoluted. I'll take you through that really quickly. The fiscal year for S.H.A. starts October 1 and ends September 30, which is a federal fiscal year. However, many of the HUD funds run on a calendar year, so the Section 8 and the public housing will come in not on a January 1 through December 31 year. So every fiscal year, the Housing Authority is going to have the first three months of its fiscal year in the previous calendar year, and of course, at the end of that fiscal year, there's going to be the last three months of the calendar year in the next fiscal year. So we have overlapping fiscal year voucher funding for calendar year 12, housing choice voucher funding generally isn't known until June, public housing funding generally isn't known until September. The point of that, of course, is we've put a budget together based upon our expense, what we know about our expenses and what it takes to manage the properties and manage the projects and deliver services. Our revenue estimates are based upon past practice, what we believe the federal government will be funding this year based upon what we're hearing, and of course, we really won't know. So what we have is a fairly conservative budget that is grounded in managing our expenses, maximizing our revenues in order to serve the maximum number of clients we can. In this budget overview and the budget document, you will see four roll-up funds. The Central Office, which is our administrative fund, the Owned Housing, which is properties Southview Terrace, Inglewood West, Duplex Triplex, where the Housing Authority owns those properties outright, rental properties, the federal programs, the public housing, the Section 8, and the MOD Rehab, and finally, the grants programs, which are the capital fund grants, as well as our economic self-sufficiency programs run through the Section 8 program. Let me back up there really quickly. On the federal programs under the net, you see the asterisk. So federal funding's been going down. The Housing Authority has something called net restricted assets. Those assets are residual, are excess federal funds to provide housing assistance payments for a client who's taking a voucher into the community to secure private rental housing. With the HUD funding going down, HUD authorizes us to use those net residual assets in order to serve the same level of clientele. So we've been, because of the decreases on the voucher funding, S.H.A. has been using the net residual assets as a way to fund housing assistance payments for our clients. Total revenues in this budget of $21,830,000. Total expenditures, net of debt service, reserve deposits, and capital improvements, The revenue sources, 87% are federal, 6.2% are other sources of grants, and the 6.4% are the rents earned on the properties managed by the Housing Authority, owned by the Housing Fiscal year 11-12 expenses, 72% is subsidy that goes directly to clients, 9% is other miscellaneous operating expenses, 15.59 is personnel, and 2.2 is capital outlay, which would include capital improvements to various properties. Staffing level for this year, 47.8. You'll note that last year, our budget approved by the Commission was 56. As you know, there's been a reduction of 8.2 FTE this past year, unfortunately, as a function of our budgetary constraints, as well as trying to align our operations in a more sustainable long-term manner. Rental assistance available in this budget, a total of 3,729 units. Let me point out that there's 3,514 units for the federal programs alone. When you add in the partnerships and the managed properties, it brings you to, that's Increasing client services, the emphasis for this budget. Family Mend is a program that provides short-term resources for low-income households to gain medical attention, to pay for school books, to purchase the appropriate clothing for a job interview. We've raised funds through small grant writing in conjunction with Shemekah nonprofit. We continue to do that. VAS program, Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing, as you know, the Housing Authority applied for and received 38 veterans vouchers. We're deploying those in the community, working with the VA. We continue to pursue those opportunities to bring in more vouchers. And finally, the public housing, family self-sufficiency, and security deposit programs, which help individuals that may not have the means to get into housing, find housing, and work with us to secure safe housing. Accomplishments this past year. Strong property management results. As you know, we've had a very high occupancy rate in our properties. We've been able to maximize the revenue at the same time reduce the expense. Property improvement, always trying to keep our property's quality. The green retrofit on Inglewood East, the property that we manage, and refinancing of Inglewood West to reduce the cost of the agency. The increase in client housing resources. I refer to that as it relates to vouchers and other grant funds that come in for direct client service. Property management realignment for greater sustainability of operations. I mentioned that as well. I think we're aligned in the appropriate way to deliver the best services to our clients. And finally, maintained operations, which may seem kind of haphazard or somewhat no big deal, but the reality is, is that we're under a lot of pressure, as you all know, and we've maintained the lease-up on the vouchers, and we've maintained our client services at a point that is at the highest level in several years. Finally, the fiscal year 2011-12 challenges. It is a challenge to meet the mission with fewer resources and rising costs. We do our best to reduce our expense, increase our revenue, maintain viable rental housing portfolio. There are properties that need capital improvements. We continue to work with lenders and HUD to find ways to fund those capital improvements. Managing the federal funding cuts and the changes on the horizon. There are several programs that are being discussed that would alter forever the nature of public housing in Section 8. Those have been out there for a few years. We don't know if they have any more traction this year or not, but we manage those and monitor those greatly. And finally, provide stable level of client service. In this budget, we are sized to provide the benefits to the clients that I noted before, the 3,729 clients, client households. With that, happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Ms. Wilson? Right, great. Well, we look forward to seeing you on September 12 then.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, if there's no objection, the Salem Housing Authority is adjourned.
A call to order the special meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Salem. Please call and roll. Board Member Bennett?
Here.
Board Member Tesler?
Present.
Board Member Nanki?
Here.
Board Member Claussen is absent. Board Member Dickey?
Here.
Board Member Thomas?
Here.
Board Member Cannon?
Yes.
Board Member Clem?
Here.
Chair Peterson?
Here. Chair, excuse me, Board Member Bennett, would you please make a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the special meeting agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by count by Member Bennett and seconded by Member Cannon to approve the special meeting agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. We have public comment, and the first person who has signed up this evening for public comment is Hazel Patton. Will you please approach the podium? And I think Hazel, you probably know that you have three minutes, and after the first two minutes, the amber light comes on, and when the red light comes on, your time is up. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. And City Council, my name is...
Mike?
This one?
That's right.
That's the one. Okay.
My name is Hazel Patton, and I'm president of Friends of Two Bridges. We wish to offer our support of the proposed agreement between the owners of the Willamette Queen Sternwheeler and the Urban Renewal Authority. A bridge connecting Riverfront Park and Minto Brown Island has been part of the Salem planning process for over 30 years. In that period, at least three citizens groups have been formed to implement the bridge to Minto Plan. Friends of Two Bridges, the third group, was formed in 2007. Our board is committed to assisting with fundraising and public outreach, as well as a presence on selection and advisory groups. We are actually pinching ourselves to be sure this is really happening. It has been a long time coming, and we offer our congratulations to the negotiators. Friends of Two Bridges is ready to go to work, and we look forward to putting together a wonderful grand opening for that bridge, much as we did for the Union Street Railroad Bridge. And I'm going to offer to Captain Richard and First Mate Barbara Chesborough the opportunity to be one of our major sponsors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for Mrs. Patton? Yes. Board Member Tesler?
Hazel, don't run away yet. I just wanted to thank you and the group for your dogged determination on this. I know at times it was a teeth gritting, hair pulling exercise, but I know that you've been such a leader on this, and I really, really, and Chris Gorsuch was there, and the Gallaghers, and so many other people have been involved in this, and so, but thank you so much, Hazel. You know, we go into the carousel, and I always think about Hazel and the carousel, and pretty soon I'll be walking over the bridge, hopefully before I reach my fifth decade. But I think that this is going to be a great thing for our community, and I've just wanted this for so long, and I'm just so eager for this to happen, and I know you guys are too. So thank you so, so very much, Hazel, and the rest of the committee, too.
You're welcome. Thank you. I'd like to add my thank you to that of Board Member Tesler. Hazel, you've done many tremendous things in this community, and I appreciate so much your dedication to getting that bridge across to Minto Brown. We know if you're involved, it's going to happen, and we thank you. And I want to thank the other people from Friends of Three Bridges. Would they please stand up maybe and tell us, please say hello? Thank you. Okay. Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you very much. Okay. Our next agenda item is a report regarding the Minto Island Bicycle and Pedestrian Bridge, the Willamette Queen Sternwheeler Loss-of-Use Agreement. Counselor Tesler, would you like to make a motion?
Thank you. I most certainly would. Waiting a long time to make this motion. I'm going to move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Board Member Tesler and seconded by Board Member Clem to move the staff recommendation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. There's no further business to come before this board, and we will be adjourned. We'll now call the call together for the Salem City Council meeting of August 22, 2011. Would the recorder please call and roll? Counselor Bennett?
Here.
Counselor Tesler?
Present.
Counselor Nanki?
Here.
Counselor Claussen is absent. Counselor Dickey?
Here.
Counselor Thomas?
Here.
Counselor Cannon?
Yes.
Counselor Clem?
Mayor Peterson.
Yes. Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone, and we certainly appreciate all of you coming this evening and want to welcome you to the City Council. If you've not been here in person before, I'm glad you're here because you get to see firsthand just how city government works, so we're pleased to have you here. We have a few items of business here that, proclamations and presentations, and our first one is the SEDCOR 2010-11 Annual Report. I believe that Ray Burstead is here. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson.
Thank you.
Mayor Peterson, council members, City Manager Norris, and citizens. My name is Raymond Burstead. I live at 262 Muirfield Avenue Southeast, Ward 4, and I am the president of the Strategic Economic Development Corporation, SEDCOR. First, I want to thank you for your continued support of SEDCOR. As this year draws to a close, we will have served the economic development needs of the mid-Willamette Valley for 29 years. Without the support of the City of Salem and our other resource partners, Marion County and Polk County, and our more than 400 private members, we would not be able to provide the valuable services needed to promote the economic health of the region. I sincerely wish that I had a couple of hours to discuss with you, but we really don't have that time in council session tonight. I didn't realize all these people were wanting to be here to listen to my report. I want to extend an invitation to each of the council members to stop by our offices for a full explanation of our services and responsibilities, and to review our annual report. In addition to managing the City of Salem Enterprise Zone system, we provide marketing services to each of the properties located in the designated urban renewal areas within Salem. SEDCOR also creates a marketing plan each year for the Mill Creek Corporate Center with the approval of the State of Oregon Department of Administrative Services and the City of Salem. We market at trade shows. We market in national and international publications for this site and our other sites. We also market regularly the Salem Renewable Energy and Technology Center properties owned by the City of Salem, as well as the industrial properties located at the Salem Regional Airport. This year in October, we will be, for the first time, attending the National Business Aviation Association Conference in Las Vegas. We have a booth there. John Wales and I are currently scheduled to man that booth for that two-day period. We also maintain an extensive web presence with Oregon Prospector, listing hundreds of available properties within the region, and we are currently updating our website to more accurately represent our presence in the region. We're excited about what we have been able to accomplish through the years, particularly this past year, with the economic climate of the nation at an all-time low. We remain confident in the vibrancy of our regional economy, and we will continue to support the growth of existing traded sector jobs and to recruit companies who offer traded sector jobs to our community. Traded sector. What do I mean by traded sector? As an example, let's say Councilman Clem and I each own a retail establishment. Might be a restaurant, it might be a clothing store. And let's say that once a week, Councilman Clem comes to my store and buys something for me, and once a week, I go to Councilman Clem's store and buy something for him. Though it benefits the two of us, there are no other commerce created for the rest of the economy. Traded sector jobs, conversely, as defined by the Oregon Legislature, means industries in which member firms sell their goods or services into markets for which national and international competition and demand exist. SONYO, a recent recruitment to our economy, is a perfect example. SONYO purchases raw materials, some of them right here locally, many of them right here locally, and services from a wide array of companies and industries, local, statewide, and nationally. Their end product is shipped out of Oregon and sold in national and international markets. The multiplier effect for manufacturing jobs is particularly compelling. For every $1 of manufacturing products sold, $1.37 is invested in the local economy. That translates to jobs, and in this analysis, every 100 manufacturing job creates nearly 40 other jobs in our economy. These are the reasons that SEDCOR and our resource partners focus our efforts on the expansion of our local traded sector industries, and why we recruit that sector of our economy. Retail and most other commercial operations are a function of markets, and markets are created by building the economic health of our region. If we have a healthy industrial economy, we have jobs. If we have jobs, we have households. If we have households, we have markets for retailers. I am truly excited about the progressive stance this council and administration has taken to promote the implementation of the Fairview Small Business Loan Program for the Fairview Urban Renewal Area. This is a bold commitment by this council to promote the economic growth in the Fairview region, and I am here to tell you, it is working very, very well. We have already assisted two companies, Organic Fresh Fingers and Wandering Angus, with expansion into the Fairview District, creating new capital investment, and more importantly, new jobs for our city. Both operations are nearing the completion of their expansions, moving from crowded, underserved facilities into state-of-the-art facilities. The city is to be commended for their efforts with these projects, and I hope that we can make this process work in other districts, because quite frankly, it works. We're also in the recruitment process of another company in the Fairview District, and that project as well looks very promising. The loan program, once again, is a critical factor in the commitment of this company. Three projects in just a few months. Again, thank you for your forward thinking. Lastly, I draw your attention to the last page of our report to the council, our prospects for this past year. Though not the numbers we had originally planned for, the numbers in this economy remain quite impressive. On our $177,000 budget from the City of Salem, 102,000 of which goes to management of the enterprise zones and work within the urban renewal areas and other administrative services, and 75,000 goes to Mill Creek Corporate Center for a total of 177,000. Last year, that was from June to June, we created, with our resource partners, over $47,788,000 worth of capital investment in Salem. That capital investment related to 353 new jobs that were not here the year before. 230 of those jobs coming from Home Depot, 100 from Garmin Industries, 16 from Kettle Foods, four from Yamasa Corporations, and three from Blue Star Gas. In addition, Home Depot has created 70 additional part-time jobs, and Garmin is set to expand their operations to where we will ultimately end up with 250 jobs in that facility. Outside of the City of Salem, but still in Marion County, we had the Turner Lumber Project, which created $2.3 million in capital investment, and 97 new jobs in Turner, Oregon. Don't think they weren't excited about that. And then Seven Brides Brewing, with a $380,000 investment, created eight new jobs in the Silverton area for a total of $2.68 million in the county outside of the City of Salem. And then there's Polk County. We were able to attract Elk Creek Lumber, which is a subsidiary of Turner Lumber in Stateon, to invest $4 million in a plant in Independence in Polk County. $4 million creating 12 new jobs. In total, for the year, $54,468,000 worth of capital investment in the region that we support, and 470 new jobs. We think it's been as good a year as we could have asked for with the economic conditions the way they are, and I would stand for any questions you might have concerning my report.
Are there any questions from counselors? Laura Tesler, and then, excuse me, Counselor Tesler, and then Counselor Nanki.
Thank you. Ray, I was real happy to see that you were working with Wandering Angus. I believe a couple of years ago, I actually spoke to you about reaching out to microbreweries and wineries, and I see...
Oh, you told me to go recruit some.
Yes, I did. And you did it, didn't you? So I'm just kind of curious, you know, with Seven Brides, I know they're in Silverton. Are you working on, you know, the yield... Are you working on, you know, the yield, bait them down here and get them into Fairview?
We actually have-
It'd be really nice if we could get some more breweries down there in the Fairview.
We have a couple of other brewery clients that are local breweries that are in the expansion mode that are working with us right now, so.
And Wandering Angus is going to have a tasting room-
Yes.
...on-site, right? This is what I understand.
That's the plan.
Okay. Because, I mean, I think this kind of stuff is going to mushroom and grow over time, and these people witnessed Ning Cassi in Eugene, which started out really small, and now Ning Cassi is an empire. So, I just, let's cultivate these little businesses like that because this is the-
Absolutely.
-atmosphere to do it. So, thank you, Ray, for doing that, and I'm glad it paid off.
Thank you.
Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks for the report, Ray. Question, just because I know we're in competition globally, actually, to try to bring new companies here. Are there specific things that throw us out of the running at the end when we're negotiating or trying to bring folks in? Basically, just trying to figure out what we may be able to do better or modify if it's something within our control, if it's just giving them lots of extra money. I know that's hard to do.
Yeah. You know, it's an interesting question. Every request for a proposal is different. Every project is different, and generally, there's one or two things within each project that sometimes stymies the project from coming here. It might be workforce. It might be the power rates. It might be the cost of the real estate. It might be some other function, but we compete nationwide for projects. Sonio, when they came to town, they narrowed it down to five states, and those five states all went to bat to compete for that project. Once they chose Oregon, there were three communities in Oregon that were on the line for that project. We just had to do it better. Our city council and our mayor and city manager stepped up to the plate and did the things that had to be done to make Salem look like the, not look like, but be the best place for them to make that development, make that capital investment. So, every time, it's different. You know, I never know what the key's going to be or what the turning point's going to be. We strive to find that information out, often on request for proposal that come through the state. We never know because the site consultants won't tell us, and we don't even know who the site consultants are in most cases. So, it's very difficult. We try to spend as much time as we can with site consultants and people in corporate decision-making world to make sure that our face is out there and that they know that we have a progressive government that's willing to step forward and make things happen, and that we have good industrial lands and that we can act quickly to get their project up and running. So, yeah, it's, I couldn't pick any one thing that ever is the key.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming, and we appreciate the report and the great success.
Hey, thanks, Mayor.
Good job. Well done. Thank you. All right. We have a special presentation regarding the Field of Flags and the Patriot Day Memorial. I believe Counselor Clem and Jerry Thompson are here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Dan Clem. I'm a resident of Ward 8. Also a member of the Field of Flags Patriots Day Memorial Steering Committee that was formed back in 2003. I also want to introduce, to my left, the Chair of the Transit Board, winner of the Willard Marshall City Top Volunteer Award, with his wife, Sue, and that's Jerry Thompson, who will be making part of the presentation. Madam Mayor, I owe you an apology.
Sorry.
This video that we're going to roll is a little bit longer than 30 seconds, so-
All right.
-I'll apologize upfront, but we're very pleased to be here tonight to give the council and the public a glimpse of what we think will be the most significant event to occur in this region, in the Pacific Northwest, in 2011. With the 10th anniversary of Patriot Day, when many gave all and were killed that day, civilians, military, fire, and police, it seems very appropriate that Salem is the capital city, should take the time, raise the resources, and honor those who've fallen in a very respectful way. These observances are occurring throughout the nation in a variety of communities. We're not aware that there's one planned like this in the Pacific Northwest, so the number of folks that serve with us on the Steering Committee, some vets, some from all walks of life, formed the Steering Committee, conducted this event in 2006 at the 5th observance, and now we're doing so at the 10th observance. It is our fervent hope that this community will continue to recall, remember, and honor those who've fallen since 9/11/2001. I'm not sure that I can speak for everyone, but we all know where we were when certain things happened. I remember exactly what I was doing when I heard about President Kennedy's assassination. I remember where I was and what I was doing when Mount St. Helens blew. I don't think there isn't a single one of us that don't remember where we were September 11, 2001. We don't want to take you back in time. We want you to get to know the 5,200 names that comprise the Field of Flags and the Patriots Day Memorial. We want you to be able to hear their name, see a flag that's been printed in their honor, and come on down to Sam Riverfront Park. It'll be over a four-day period, the 8th to the 11th of September. If you've seen the movie Private Ryan, you're moved by the flag waving at the beginning of the movie, but it really comes full circle when you see the flag waving at the end of the movie because you know that flag stands for the sacrifice of people who gave their all for people they can't even know or will know. So, with that, we'd like to go ahead and make our presentation and then remain available for any questions you might have.
Thank you very much.
Better put some sound on there. Let me turn it down here a little bit. Is that right?
(inaudible)
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 (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) Dan wanted that louder, but I didn't do it.
That is a presentation that was prepared by John Sherwood, who works for the Assessor's Office, right after our 2006 event that we had, and it's a pictorial of what we did. I'm Jerry Thompson. I live at 4930 State Street in Salem, and I guess I'm a part of this group for sure, and I was before. Let me do two things tonight, and let me take you on a short tour of the field, as it's going to be this year, using last time's event as a pattern, and then I'll tell you, give you the brief description of the major activities that are going to happen. So, to start with, let's see, Mayor can't see this one. I'll do it on this one. This is the 9/11 area, and it has banners similar to this one that's over on the wall. And we have, this is Tower Number 1, and the airplane that crashed into it's in the middle. This is Tower 2, and the airplane that crashed into it's in the middle. This is the Pentagon, and this is the airplane that crashed into it, Flight 93. And these are the police and fire that were killed trying to save the other ones. So, that's the heroes' field. And they have a different banner than the one that you see on the wall here. It has just the names of the police and fire on it. Then down at the bottom here, which is the north end, this is the pavilion, is the northwest military field, and there'll be about 300 flags, US flags, that represent, one flag per person that died in Iraq and Afghanistan from Oregon, Washington, and Idaho. And up here, in the Number 10 and the Number 11 that you see, this is going to be the Oregon Law Enforcement Memorial Field, from the names from the Oregon Memorial that's out at the academy. And this field is the fire field, the Oregon Fire Memorial Field, from the academy's walls. What's going to happen, starting at September 7, which is Wednesday, early in the morning, there'll be about 50 or 60 LeSchwab managers from all over the state will descend on Riverfront Park and start pounding rebar into the ground. And they'll be putting about 5,000 pieces of rebar in the ground. At 11 o'clock or thereabouts, we'll start reading the names of the 9/11 people, each ones that died on 9/11, and at the same time, people will start posting flags out there in the field. At 4 o'clock, we'll be putting flags on the police and fire fields, and that's being managed by the Salem Police and Fire Departments, so that'll be a real interesting event. And then at 6 o'clock, this is still on Wednesday, we'll be posting all the military flags that are there, and those will be formally posted by law enforcement and military personnel. On Thursday, the 8th, after the Red Cross Heroes Breakfast, we'll be having our opening ceremonies, and I think Mayor, Madam Mayor, is going to be there to greet us, and you get to introduce Jerry Frank. I don't know if I told you that yet.
That'll be an honor.
Yes. And he is our honorary chairman, by the way. Then we'll have our, that's our opening ceremonies, and after the opening ceremonies, there's not much more on Thursday. On Friday, we'll have the, that's the Law Enforcement Public Safety Day, I guess you'd call it, and Salem Police and Fire are going to manage the program there, and Fire Department's going to have, as I understand it, a very moving ceremony towards the end that they do for fallen firefighters. So, that'll be very nice. That starts at 6 o'clock. And on Saturday is a quiet day. We're not going to do anything out there other than allow people to come out and wander through the fields and just feel the immensity of it. And then on Sunday, the 11th, we have a morning ceremony at 10 o'clock in the morning and a 6 o'clock ceremony. The 10 o'clock ceremony actually starts at 9:50 because right at 10 o'clock is a day, it's a moment of, what do they call it? Remembrance. Moment of remembrance, which is newly, a new thing that Congress just did. So, right at 10 o'clock, we'll have that moment of remembrance, and everybody across the country is supposed to be doing it all at the same time, so we'll be part of that. And the evening ceremony is a closing ceremony, and we'll have a flyover of jets. They'll probably make their own noise though this time, rather than having us put it in there. So, anyway, and then the 12th, Monday, the 12th, we'll be tearing everything down. The sales of all the flags and banners that we can sell, the proceeds will go, about two-thirds of it, will go to the Oregon National Guard Family Relief Fund, which provides help for families that have deployed soldiers and that type of thing. Can you add, Dan?
Just a couple of things. For those who will see this event, you'll see the field lit up at night, and the flags will also be on the Union Street Railroad pedestrian bridge across to West Salem. Just want to mention that we raised all the money to buy all these flags from local businesses, and city TOT funds were used as well. So, we're very proud that we have a financially sound event, that folks can come and really honor those who've fallen. The Gold Star families will be there. We will honor the Gold Star families. Want to draw your attention, too, to the fact that thousands of Oregonians right now are still serving in harm's way. Locally, the National Guard unit, my old unit, the Engineer Battalion, is in Afghanistan. We pray that they'll return sometime this year. That Emergency Relief Fund for the families is critical to getting rent paid and utilities paid when they first get deployed and helping reintegrate them back into society. Our best way of thanking those who've served and sacrificed is to be there for their families and to be there for them. This event is financially being sponsored by the Exchange Clubs, and when we did it in 2006, we raised almost $75,000 for Emergency Relief Fund, family building blocks, food shares, a number of other. So, we hope to raise at least that this time.
Double it.
That's our way of honoring and taking care of the citizen-soldier families that are left behind and that need to carry on when they get back. Madam Mayor and Council, this isn't about pro-military, anti-military. Salem is a city of peace. It's about peace that's earned through sacrifice. So, our motto for this event is to never forget. We hope that every citizen in the Salem Kaiser area will never forget what these folks have done for us. So, on behalf of the Steering Committee, we want to thank you for the opportunity to make this presentation and hope to see you down at the Riverfront Park. make this presentation, and hope to see you down at the Riverfront Park. Jerry, anything?
My wife reminded me that I forgot to mention the race. We have a walk-run on September 11th, starting at 8 o'clock in the morning, a 3K or 5K. And that'll go across the pedestrian bridge into Wallace Park and come back. So it'll be a run of remembrance, or whatever you want to call it. Thank you so much for having us. Are there any questions that maybe we could answer?
Are there questions from Council?
Dan can answer them all.
Fine. Well, we really appreciate the presentation, appreciate you being here and the work that you've been doing to bring this outstanding event to our city. And I would like to note that the City of Salem will be participating in that Moment of Silence, Moment of Remembrance on 9/11 at 1 o'clock Eastern Time. So you'll hear bells and sirens and whistles, et cetera, from our Fire Department, Police Department, the City of Salem. And we're honored to be able to be part of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're now moving on to reports of boards, commissions, committees, and presentations by outside agencies. And I understand that we have some people here from the annual City Volunteer Recognition Committee. I believe that Marilyn Daly is here. Welcome. Marilyn is the manager of the Center 50+. And I think you have a report for us.
I do. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am Marilyn Daly, and I am the Center 50+ manager. But I'm also the Chair of the Interdepartmental Volunteer Management Team. One of the assignments of this committee is to report annually the city's usage of volunteers. I'd like to start by just noting the members of this committee, which include Karen Kinsey from the Library, Tibby Larson, and Melinda McCullough from Public Works Parks and Recreation, Jennifer Graber from the Police Department, and you're going to get to see these folks up here, so if you don't see them in the audience. We have Rachel Dixon and Lori Shaw from the Neighborhood Services, Roger Stevenson from Emergency Response Efforts, and Ed Fisher from Human Resources. The City of Salem benefits from a variety of individuals and groups that take on projects, offer volunteer labor to programs and services, or serve on a special committee, board, or commission. Most city departments utilize a volunteer workforce in some capacity. It is estimated that over 100 different staff assist in the coordination and supervision This year, over 4,500 volunteers contributed nearly 168,000 hours of service to the city. These volunteer efforts are equal to 80 full-time employees. According to the Points of Light Foundation methodology, that equates to more than $3.4 million of in-kind support to the City of Salem. One area that utilizes many volunteers is Center 50+, which is dear to my heart. Center 50+ utilizes volunteers in each and every program and service area, whether it's from the front desk receptionists, to program chairs, to the lapidary and woodshop supervisors, to special event coordination, tax and insurance assistance, to the career counseling or Alzheimer program. You will see a volunteer there and in leadership roles. It is not a small comment to say that the center would not exist without our volunteers. It is because of our volunteer workforce of over 706 volunteers contributing 78,000 hours of service that it makes it possible for a small staff of seven FTE to offer more than 200 different programs and services to over 800 individuals daily. It is because volunteers have stepped into critical roles and taken on leadership responsibilities that this is possible. It is truly a peer-driven organization, where seniors are taking an active role in the success of the future, success of today and tomorrow's Center 50+. Over the past three years, the volunteer hours have remained fairly steady. This is important to note because of the changes that have occurred in the management of volunteers at Center 50+. Two years ago, through budget reductions, the center did have to eliminate our full-time volunteer coordinator position, and to a volunteer-driven organization that could have been detrimental to programs and services. However, after staff regrouped and looked at a new management model of our volunteers, where every staff is involved in the coordination, our volunteers stepped up and said, "How can we help?" And they took on some new tasks and some new leadership responsibilities, which has included a couple of new successful programs. In the past two years, we've implemented a mentor program, where volunteers, long-term volunteers, are now training new volunteers. That on-day, everyday coordination, and that check-in person for a new volunteer is absolutely critical to their success and their retention. Another change that has occurred because of our volunteers stepping up and helping out in greater ways is that they've actually looked at volunteer opportunities as work experience, and have sought out additional responsibilities and coordination, whether it's processing applications, or helping with the process of working through background checks. We are able to use volunteer efforts in that. The history of the center being a peer-driven organization, and the lifeblood of it being volunteers, remains intact.
Good evening, Mayor Peterson and Councilors. I'm BJ Toey, Salem Public Library Administrator.
Welcome.
Thank you. Volunteers also play a vital role at Salem Public Library, assisting our staff. And it's through volunteers that we are able to provide the kind of exceptional staff, thank you Marilyn, exceptional service to our community that we are able to provide. Currently, we have over 370 volunteers who contribute more than 23,000 hours at the library. That translates into 11 FTE, which make up about 20% of the library workforce, if they're included as part of that. Some of our volunteers are very, very faithful. We have some who have been there over 25 years. Our oldest volunteer is 94 and coming three times a week. So we have a wonderful group of volunteers there. We recently also changed the way that we take in volunteers. We've started doing an online process where we post job descriptions of the different volunteer opportunities at the library, so that people can either apply in person or online. Then as part of that process, we offer twice-monthly orientations, where we really describe the opportunities that are available for our volunteers to take. Then they can pursue the exact opportunities that meet up with their own wishes, and that makes it a win-win for both the volunteers and the library. And as Marilyn said about Center 50+, the library couldn't do what we do without them.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Tibby Larson. I'm the volunteer coordinator for Salem Parks. The city would have to hire over 20 full-time workers to replace the 44,000 hours of service provided by volunteers last year. There is no doubt that our parks would look very different without the dedication and hard work of these volunteers. We saw a 3.4 increase in volunteer and supplemental labor over this past year. We've seen a 160% increase since the program's inception in 1996. We continue to build partnerships with Marion County, United Way, Corbin, and Willamette University, as well as Salem Kaiser School District, and all the service organizations and faith-based organizations here in town. The trend we see is very different from the trend that the library and Center 50+ sees. We tend to see more volunteers wanting to be involved on an episodic basis, is what we call it, three to four hours, maybe once a month, once a quarter, twice a year, that kind of involvement, as opposed to performing ongoing maintenance tasks. Volunteers perform a wide variety of projects in Salem Parks. We had one group of neighbors, I think one of them is here tonight, who opened, closed, and maintained the restroom at Fairmont Park every day over the whole splash fountain season. So that's some pretty consistent work there. While other volunteers waged the war against invasive species, allowing Salem Parks to manage sensitive environments in a much more sustainable manner, using fewer and fewer chemicals. This year, one little story I want to tell you is a Boy Scout completed a significant project in a park called Sunny Slope Park. He directed the construction and installation of two horseshoe pits. And these were actually financed by a neighbor who's been dreaming about having horseshoe pits in his park. So this Eagle Scout directed the installation, and some scoreboards, too, made exactly how the neighbor wanted them. They turned out beautifully, and now the neighbor is hosting horseshoe lessons twice a week at the park. So if you want to learn to play horseshoes. Okay, now I'm putting on my recreation hat for Melinda McCullough. Volunteers are utilized at the Wallace Marine Sports Complex as scorekeepers, and greeters, and groundskeepers, all during the softball season. More than 100 volunteers are utilized every year to make the Country Kids Relay happen for over 50 local schools. Of course, it wasn't always the Country Kids Relay. It's been happening for 35 years now. So I imagine a fair number of you participated in those relays when you were young. Many youth ages 12 to 17 gain leadership skills and actually some job skills each year by volunteering with Summer Parks Program Tennis, Basketball, and Soccer Camp.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Graber, volunteer coordinator with the Salem Police Department. This past year, a total of 110 volunteers provided over 12,000 hours of service to the Salem Police Department to help them in providing crime prevention and response services to the community. Volunteers help the department in just about every unit, but just a few of the activities that have kept them busy this past year are conducting 25 household security surveys for residents of Salem, moving radar reader boards to neighborhoods that have submitted requests, issuing 290 citations to vehicles that were parked illegally in disabled parking spaces, providing support to almost 500 victims of domestic violence, and performing routine inspections on all patrol cars, which will allow officers to respond to calls out in the community. Volunteers also help process pond slips from local pond shops, which helped detectives recover almost $70,000 worth of stolen property this past year alone.
Good evening. My name is Roger Stevenson. I'm the emergency manager for your city here. And I'm out of the Fire Department. And I'd like to introduce you to the Emergency Response team from the city. 638 citizens have been trained, and they have put out approximately 5,500 hours this last year. There are the folks in your neighborhoods who you'll see in green during a major disaster. You may see them this winter, if there's snow and ice storms. You may see them in your neighborhoods doing what we call walkabouts, which are doing neighborhood preparedness efforts, knock and talk, if you will, to the neighbors. And you'll also see them at major presentations here around the city. Riverfront Park, presentations on earthquake preparedness, and so forth throughout your city. They're your neighbors. They're there to help you in a major disaster. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Rachel Dixon, and I work with neighborhood associations, which I will talk about in a minute. But first, the individuals who contribute to the City of Salem by serving on boards and commissions, and as you all know, on City Council, devote hours behind the scenes, as well as at meetings, studying, listening to presentations, asking questions, and contributing their knowledge and expertise in order to make sure that the city makes the best decisions possible. And the city does owe a lot to these unsung volunteer heroes. Of course, the volunteer efforts of citizens, groups, faith-based organizations, and agencies who are not official City of Salem volunteers also make a huge impact when they partner with the city. And some of the city's strongest partners and sources of volunteers are the 19 Neighborhood Associations, the two Neighborhood Partnership Programs, and the teen action teams. These neighbors and students who are dedicated to improving their local areas make a difference, not only by advising the city, but by their great service projects in parks, streets, schools, watersheds, and anywhere in the neighborhood that they see that needs help. And I see a lot of faces out here who could tell stories about the hours they've spent working with their neighborhood associations. This year, the Partnership Program was restructured to be a two-year rotating program, which allows all the neighborhoods and other groups the opportunity to apply, to join with the city, to focus on a specific neighborhood for a two-year time period. This year's partnership areas currently are in the East Lancaster area and the Southeast Salem area, Sesna. And in the 2010-11 fiscal year, over 2,700 volunteer hours were logged, just in the partnership areas alone. The picture on the bottom of the screen will show you the teen members of CARE Core, a brand-new high school service learning leadership camp with the theme "Get Out and Serve" that was developed by the city's Youth Development and Prevention Section, in collaboration with the Salem Kaiser Education Foundation, Salem Kaiser Schools, and the Ike Box this
As you can see from tonight's report, the city greatly benefits from our volunteers. But we wouldn't be very good volunteer coordinators with the cameras and a captive audience if we didn't ask you to consider volunteering for the City of Salem. If you are not a current volunteer, here are your benefits. You will know that you are making a difference in the lives of others. You will be involved in your community and influence the community in which you live. You will be a good steward of public lands and open spaces. You will make a positive impact on public safety now and in the future. And as research indicates, we're offering you the opportunity to live longer and healthier To show appreciation for all City of Salem volunteers, a volunteer recognition event is scheduled for Wednesday, September 14th, at 5:00 PM, here at Peace Plaza. The evening will include food, music, and a program. And during the program, there will be a presentation of several special awards. Nominations for special volunteer awards are being accepted through the Mayor and City Managers' Office through this Wednesday, August 24th. We hope all of our volunteers will join us and allow us to honor you on that special day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from Council? Councilor Dickey?
Thanks, Marilyn, and all who presented. That was really great. I probably, the last, I've been through three budget cycles now, and every year where we've had to cut and that kind of thing, I probably get more comments about, "Why don't we have more volunteers in the City of Salem?" from people who just aren't aware of how many volunteers we actually have. And earlier this year, I had an opportunity, I got some information from Tibby Larson, had an opportunity to share about Parks volunteers with my neighborhoods and other people. And it was just, people were amazed by how many great volunteers we have. And we just really appreciate that, and the people, the staff behind the scenes who coordinate that. And, you know, we don't necessarily know all of the people that are out there doing the work, because they're just doing the work. They're not out there, you know, waving their arms or waving flags around saying, "Hey, I'm volunteering." They're just, they're doing it behind the scenes, and we really appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We certainly do appreciate the work of our volunteer coordinators and our volunteers. We have council rules that require that at 7:30, we begin public hearings. And so now I'm going to move to Item 8, the public hearing. So I hope everyone can please bear with me, we are trying to be sensitive to the fact that many of you have come to discuss an item that will be coming on very quickly. All right. Under Item 8, public hearing has to do with Ordinance Bill Number 2211. Will the recorder please introduce it?
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony regarding Ordinance Bill Number 2211 relating to the Central Business District and Historic Preservation, amending SRC Chapter 154 and SRC Chapter 230 to allow drive-throughs for new banks and credit unions as a conditional use in the Salem Downtown Historic District, where they are currently prohibited.
Thank you. I believe we have a staff report. Who's presenting the staff report?
Mayor, we have Lisa Anderson-Ogilvy presenting the report tonight for the Community Development Department.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. As Wiki said, my name's Lisa Anderson-Ogilvy, and I'm a planner in the Community Development Department. And I'm here tonight to present the staff report for the proposed amendments to the Salem Revised Code. I request that the entire record, the staff report, and its attachments be entered into the official record. This amendment would allow drive-throughs for banks and credit unions in the Downtown Historic Corps as a conditional use. And so, you know, this map shows you the boundaries of the Downtown Historic District, and it's bounded generally in the south by Ferry Street, and the north, the mid-block between Court and Schumacher, High Street to the east, and Front Street to the west. The approval process would require an applicant to apply for a conditional use permit for their specific proposal, which will be reviewed by the hearings officer at a public hearing. The criteria require the proposal to be consistent with a comprehensive plan, and that it minimizes any adverse likely impacts to the immediate neighborhood. The hearings officer can attach conditions that would make sure it's consistent with a com-plan, and that it doesn't impact the neighborhood. Because this is a historic district, the proposal would also require historic design review, which is reviewed by the Historic Landmarks Commission. In addition to the existing design standards that they review all new buildings against, this code amendment provides additional considerations for drive-throughs. First, all components of the drive-through must be located on the side or rear of the building. The queuing lane shall also be located on the side or the rear. Only two queuing lanes may be permitted. And if there's alley access, then the access should be encouraged to be from the alley. Therefore, staff recommends that the council adopt the facts and findings of the staff report, and accept second reading of the ordinance bill. Thank you.
We have several people who have signed up to speak on this issue. The first is Mark Shipman. Could you please come to the podium and introduce yourself? And you have-- And you have, is it three minutes on public hearing?
Three.
Three, three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilors. For the record, my name is Mark Shipman. I'm a land use attorney here with Sawfield Griggs, street address of 250 Chirp Street, Southeast, Suite 300, here in Salem. I'm here this evening on behalf of Columbia State Bank. We're the proponent that has been working closely with staff over the past several months to craft the ordinance that's before you this evening. And it's been a, it's been a little complex in order to come up with an ordinance that we believe creates, essentially allows relaxation of a, of something that's not allowed right now in the Historic Core. But yet, currently is, there's, there's three current drive-throughs in the Historic Core. This limits it to, to new banks and, and new credit unions going in that area. Outside of that black line there on the, on the map in front of you, outside of the historic district, which is also zoned Central Business District, anyone can put a drive-through in that area. And so what we're seeking to do is to allow a process where folks like our client, Columbia State Bank, come in, make an application for conditional use permit, and to try and see if they can get a new building established in the Downtown Core. Specifically, the conditional use process does have some unique features to it. One is a timing element. The other's a design element that actually doesn't open the door entirely to everyone, I think, as we've commented before with you. And like I said, we've worked hard with staff to come up with a process and with a, with a mechanism that we believe will enable this to happen in a way that, that doesn't open it up entirely so that they can be located in every location. It's got to be for new construction, which in this situation, we're proposing, would be proposing with an additional application down the road. Right now, we're just looking for the ordinance to be approved this evening. And so we would urge you to approve the staff recommendation and, and have the second reading and, and approve the ordinance. I'd be happy to address any questions if council have this time.
Thank you, Mr. Shipman. Are there questions of council, from council?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Heather Sepa, is that correct? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council. Heather Sepa, 280 Liberty Street, Southeast. I'm with Columbia State Bank. I'm the regional manager and fortunate enough to say that Salem is in my jurisdiction. We opened our temporary offices about a, little, little over a year ago with the intent to build something wonderful in downtown Salem. We're committed to Salem. We are Pacific Northwest Community Bank. We feel that we need this service to be competitive and offer the convenience to our customers that they would expect of, of a local bank. So I appreciate your consideration to approve the conditional use permit for drive-throughs for new banks and credit unions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions? All right. Thank you very much. Next on the list is Ray Burstead.
Madam Mayor, council, I guess you know what I'm going to talk about: economic development. We've got a multimillion-dollar project. We've got jobs downtown. I don't need to say anymore. I think as long as this ordinance gets adopted, that this would be a great thing for Salem. Thank you.
Thank you, Virmish. Are there questions for Mr. Burstead? All right. Thank you. Jason Brandt?
Good evening, City Council. Jason Brandt with the Salem Area Chamber of Commerce, 1110 Commercial Street Northeast. Just very briefly want to reiterate what Ray just spoke to, which is that this community really is about jobs. And Mayor Peterson, your acronym, jobs, join our business sector. And when we have a local business that wants to expand their presence and bring more jobs and contribute to the local economy, that's a good thing for, for us as, as a community. So wanted to express our appreciation and to Columbia State Bank for their interest in expanding their presence here in the Salem area.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Brandt? All right. Thank you very much. Tim Stumpel? I'm sorry, did I say that right?
That's very good. That's correct.
Okay.
My name's Tim Stumpel, and I'm a senior vice president with Columbia State Bank. I'll try not to duplicate what Heather has said. Really simply, my responsibilities are for commercial business customers. And our branch locations are integral to the delivery of our services. The design, the concept of our building, I believe, is, is very functional, not only for the bank, but its ability to serve the community. And I ask your indulgence and consideration of this, this change. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions? All right. Thank you very much. Diane Gainesforth?
Good evening.
Thank you. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address. And you have two minutes. The amber light comes on at the end of three. The red light comes on.
Thank you. Diane Severson-Gainesforth.
Begin to the microphone there so we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
I think that's going to do it.
Okay. Property owner at 129 Commercial Street, next to the proposed development and hopefully part of it. I just want to speak to the fact that it's been five years since the fire that took away the old Les Newman's and the McMahon's property businesses. I think, too, it's time to move on, and I want to say that I too favor this change. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Ms. Gainesforth? No. Thank you very much for coming down tonight. All right. Counselor Tesler, would you please make a motion regarding this item? This is in your ward. Oh, I'm sorry. We have first questions of staff? Questions of, oh, all right, then. Sorry, Counselor Tesler?
Yes, I will. Thank you. I will move staff recommendation on this item.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Tesler and seconded by Counselor Bennett to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, excuse me. I mean... Oh, I'm sorry. We need to close the hearing. All right. Now we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion indicate aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We will now go back to Item 3. And Item 3 is a time when we have for public comment. And this is for comment of items, agenda items, other than what we just had, which was a public hearing. So I have an extensive signup sheet. And I'm going to ask your indulgence, permission, for me to actually go out of order a little bit because there are a couple of people who've signed up to speak on one or two other issues, and then the rest are here to speak on the KMUZ request. So if that's, that's what we'll do. And the first person I'm going to call is Karina Lemmons. And you've indicated 4.3D is the item that you're speaking on. You have three minutes. And you probably know the amber light comes on at two and the red light at three. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Peterson and the members of the City Council. As you mentioned, I am here to testify on Item 433D and in effect, encourage and recommend your full authorization for the city manager to execute the intergovernment agreement with Salem Kaiser School District and impacting the relationships with many other youth-serving organizations. This may feel like a formality to you. And why would I come asking you, recommending you, execute an intergovernment agreement? It's actually because the quality of life and safety of 41,000 children in your berth depend on the successful execution of this agreement. As you heard earlier from the Directors of Volunteer Services, items such as Care Core, Strengthening Families, the Teen Action Network, and the Teen Action Teams are all impacted by that agreement. The contributions that you have made to service learning programs and impacted thousands and thousands of middle school and high school youth are contingent upon this agreement. The after-school programs that you support are absolutely essential part of this agreement. We know that those programs that you support keep our kids safe. A lot of you know that prime time, crime time is at 3 to 6. And you think, oh, that's when our kids, if they're not in great programs, are going to be out vandalizing and slashing tires when actually, and I think Chief Moore can stand behind this one, too, is that's also a time when our children are victimized the most. When you are supporting this agreement, you're making sure that programs and services are keeping our kids safe. You also know that you're inspiring learning. Those programs are getting our, our future bankers, our future lawyers, our future leaders are keeping them safe. And essential to this is also the continuation of the partnerships that have been developed. Those after-school programs that this agreement supports is essential to also helping us serve 64,000 hot meals to children who could, would not have been served last year. If these programs go away, the supper program goes away. And that's why the partnership with the Salem Kaiser School District, the City of Salem, Marion Polk Food Share, and Salem Kaiser Education Foundation is essential. The programs go away, the meals go away. It might seem a formality to you today, but the livelihood, the safety, and the quality of life for 41,000 children depends on the execution of this agreement tonight.
Thank you very much, Karina. Your testimony is welcomed and appreciated, and your work is most appreciated by me, the council, this community. Do we have questions for Ms. Lemmons tonight?
The work of your youth development and prevention staff is stellar. It receives citywide, regionwide, and national attention because of the true collaborative nature. This agreement is the intentional extension of that, and I appreciate your consideration.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming tonight. All right. Barbara Palermo has signed up to speak on Item 7C. Barbara, will you please come to the podium? There you are. Welcome. And you know that the amber light is two minutes and the red light is three.
I know the drill. Thank you.
You remember.
My name is Barbara Palermo, and I live in West Salem. Later this evening, you will review a report from your staff regarding the chicken ordinance. According to this report, the number of chicken-related code violations has gone down compared to previous years when there was no ordinance, even though the number of chicken owners has increased significantly. The cost to the city to perform inspections and process chicken licenses is just $312, above and beyond the income generated by the licensing fees. But the decrease in code violations makes up for this small deficit. This means the chicken ordinance has not created a code enforcement problem or financial burden for the city, as some feared it would, and we have proven ourselves to be responsible chicken owners. Therefore, we ask that you please consider the following changes to the ordinance. One, eliminate the need for inspections. This is what costs the city money, and it's really not necessary unless there's a complaint. Two, reduce the cost of the chicken license to a one-time $25 fee. So far, 48 of us have paid $50 for our chicken licenses. And in a few short months, we're going to have to pay $50 again. This is unreasonable and for many, unaffordable. If inspections are eliminated, there would be no need to charge this much. And a one-time fee of $25 would cover the cost of maintaining the website. Three, eliminate the rule that requires chicken coops be 10 feet from the chicken owner's own house. There's no logical reason for this. The closer the coop is to our own houses, the further it is from neighbors, and that's what matters. Four, change the square footage requirement to exclude the chicken run. The 120-square-foot requirement should only apply to the portion of the chicken structure that has walls and a roof, not the wire run that's attached to it. A wire pin should not be subjected to the building code requirement because it's not a building. Five, please increase the number of hens to five. Most cities allow up to six hens, and for good reason. Hens lay fewer and fewer eggs as they get older. We want to keep our older hens because they're pets that we're fond of and because they will continue to provide fertilizer and natural pest control. But we would like to be able to introduce young chicks when our hens get older so that we can keep those eggs coming. And lastly, please consider a special use clause. The Marion Polk Food Share, Pringle Creek Community Garden, and the Dev School have all expressed to me a strong desire to include a chicken coop at their facilities, but under the current rules, they cannot. All other parts of the ordinance would remain intact, including the online registration, the 20-foot setback from neighbors, no roosters, et cetera. These changes would result in better compliance and even fewer code violations. Since this is no longer a land use issue, it's my understanding that modifications can be made quickly and easily, thank goodness. Thank you for considering our request.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for Ms. Palermo? No? All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming. All right. There are people who signed up to testify that, who did not indicate an agenda item. So I apologize if I'm lumping you in, in the wrong section. But here we go. We're going to start at the top. Karen Holman. And Karen, good evening. And it's two minutes to the amber light. And then when the red light comes on, that's the end of the three minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. Mayor Peterson, members of City Council. My name's Karen Holman. I'm a chemistry professor at Willamette University, and I live in Ward 7. I have 10 years' experience in community radio and in other cities. And I've been leading the KMUZ effort for about five years now. I am here to invite the city of Salem to invest in our city by helping to establish the first community radio station in the Mid Valley. This one-time investment will pay dividends to the city and our community for decades to come. In anticipation of this meeting, I have heard a lot of discussion about whether or not city funds should be used for this particular endeavor. And in the spirit of community radio, that's an excellent question and very worth discussion. And I think that once there's a solid understanding of what community radio is, then it will become clear that this is an appropriate use of city funds. First, I would like to remind everyone of what community radio is not. Community radio is not a platform to disseminate a single viewpoint. And community radio's purpose is not to persuade people to accept any particular idea. Rather, it provides a venue for community members to learn about one another and learn about their own community and how it relates to the wider world. It promotes cultural exchange, civic responsibility, and reasoned discourse. It can provide the city with enhanced opportunities to inform their residents of available services and to communicate key, communicate key information in the event of an emergency. KMUZ is excited about the prospect of reflecting the opinions and cultures of Salem's diverse communities. As mandated by the National Federation of Community Broadcasters, of which we are a candidate member, we are committed to giving the general public access to the airwaves. Many cities, large and small, recognize the importance of community radio and supporting it with city funds. These range from New York and San Francisco to San Marcos, California, and Shitty Cove, Oregon. And in fact, at this particular City Council meeting, it's been hard to watch any one of these testimonies and presentations without imagining how KMUZ could be used to disseminate information, such as the ribbon-cutting at Minto Brown or broadcasting some of the important events, such as the Field of Flags event. KMUZ has accomplished much in the past few months. We have raised $40,000 to date. We have equipped a studio in Mission Mill. We have built a temporary tower on a site in Turner. We have sent out our signal successfully, resulting in meeting all of the FCC requirements for license. And our next step is to receive a permit to build a permanent tower and to begin broadcasting and putting together our programming. And that's why we're here today. An investment from the city of Salem would assist KMUZ in moving forward with its technical and program development. We hope the city sees the value in this endeavor. How many people came out tonight to support a one-time use of city funds to support KMUZ? Please stand up or raise your hand. Thank you. Janine Renee will speak about KMUZ's business plan next. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Janie Rennie?
I'm sorry. It's Janine, isn't it? Yes. Janine Renee.
Dr. Janine Renee. I live in Ward Two. I trust that everyone on the council received their PDF file of the 45-page KMUZ business plan. I understand that it had been forgotten since its original presentation in 2010 before this council, but I'm glad to see that we had a chance to update it. A lot has happened since last May when we first presented this plan. And I've spent a lot of time bringing in the latest figures, comparisons to our competitors, other businesses. Now, I want to address, rather than go over the plan itself, which you have in writing, I wanted to address some concerns that were forwarded to me. One was from Counselor Clausen. I believe that this board of directors of KMUZ didn't really have the qualifications to create a nonprofit radio station. I would point out that our very own beloved Dave Hammack, sitting in the back, this is the seventh radio station, community radio station, that he has constructed over a 30-year career in radio, all of which are still on the air. I bring to this board, I am the founding president of the Willamette Arts Center out on the fairgrounds. During my leadership there, I wrote 23 grants, 15 of which were funded, just a 65% success rate. I have personally brought in $134,000 to the city of Salem to be spent on the arts, and I have not received a penny for that. That is the work ethic that I bring to KMUZ. I think that that gives you some idea of at least of just one of our eight-member boards' qualifications to make this happen. Now, as I said, I trust that you reviewed this wonderful 45-page document, and I would like to answer any questions you might have about the break-even analysis or about our three-year budget plan. And I would certainly welcome any questions.
Are there questions from counselors? Counselor Bennett?
Yeah. Janine, I just wanted to compliment you on the business plan.
Thank you.
I thought it was very thorough and complete, and to the extent there were any of us who forgot about it, I'm surprised, given its comprehensiveness. We don't usually see documents like this, so thank you very much.
Well, you know, when I was looking online, I discovered a notation on one website that funding requests for less than $100,000 don't generally require a business plan. But we've had one since 2010, despite rumors to the contrary.
Other questions? All right. Thank you very much. Next is Matt Nazanski. Welcome. You have three minutes. At the end of two minutes, the amber light comes on, and then the red light at the end of three. Just state your name and address.
Great. My name's Matt Nazanski. I live at 1690 19th Street Northeast in Ward One. Tonight, I'm speaking as a member of KMUZ's Program Review Committee. We're a seven-member committee of volunteers with some experience in radio and media, charged with being the first contact for new DJs. I'm here to talk a little bit about our work and how we're working with people who are interested in getting on the air. So our program review process contains, well, it's three steps broadly. We review applications, and truly anyone can apply for a show. We interview people once we get through that process, and then we get them into the training pipeline. Our program review guidelines generally follow KMUZ's mission of celebrating the community with the charge of fostering programming that serves and attracts listeners. Our involvement with people typically revolves around making sure that a person has some expertise in the subject matter that they want to broadcast on and to schedule an appropriate length for the show. That does a couple of things. It makes the show interesting and relevant to listeners. It encourages a local connection with the subject matter, and it also ensures that the host will be able to support the show over the long term, which is important for continuity. We've had some interesting ideas come through so far from the community, and we've reviewed almost 20 applications so far and interviewed about half of those. For example, a talk show discussing available social services and ideas for self-reliance, a program of all vocal music, film scores, both listening to and discussion of film music, a show of interviews with local farmers and tours of their operations, and that would be our first potential crossover with CCTV partnership and collaboration we're hoping to continue. So we're excited to get these people and more on the air, and putting the station on the air will do a lot to help that. I encourage your support of KMUZ.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from counselors?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Joe Stanch?
I'm Joe Strauk. Sorry to embarrass you on the pronouncement of that, but I live at 2650 High Street. I am going to Schmeckada right now. I'm studying education and history, and I just started volunteering at KMUZ two weeks ago, two and a half weeks ago. I'm volunteering there because I find radio incredibly interesting. I'd love to have a career in it. And also, Schmeckada doesn't offer any communications programs like that. So this was a unique opportunity for me to go into a radio station from the ground up and learn a lot. And I've never volunteered in my life, and I actually look forward to going into the studio and hooking up cables and just doing really mundane tasks, but I'm having a ton of fun with it. As I've become better acquainted with some of the volunteers, I've been really surprised at how hard it's been to get this thing off the ground and the opposition. And the two main points that I heard were, you know, it's city money, it's taxes, nobody likes taxes. But when I was thinking about it, your average taxpayer, if this is a one-time thing, they're going to spend about 17 cents each on this, and you lose that kind of money in your car, out of your pockets. It literally falls out of your pockets, and you don't think about it twice. Secondly, I heard that some people are concerned that young people aren't interested in radio, which I can understand that. Radio's kind of antiquated. But at the same time, a lot of these young people have stacks of VHS tapes or vinyl records, or they're using their camera phones and putting apps on them to make it look like their pictures came off of like a cheap Polaroid from the 70s. There's this romanticism with this old technology that I think translates really well to radio. And everybody I've talked to and told I've been volunteering, their ears kind of perk up. They're like, oh, really, you are? I didn't know what's going on with that. I didn't know if that was happening. I didn't... They want to get involved, but it's just, young people are impatient. And so if they don't hear it on the radio, they don't, you know, they're not sure, and they just kind of dismiss it. And I think there's just a great core of people here that are pro anything local. They're rabid for it. Music, arts, film, whatever you can put in there. And they support it, and they could easily move away from here, but they stay because they see the potential here. They believe in this town, and they believe there's a need for this kind of service. Now, I don't know a lot about politics. I don't know what people are, like, what the worst that could happen would be if we got this funding. I don't know if, like, we'll have to shut down schools next year, or families are going to have to split one bean together for dinner, or it just doesn't make any sense to me. Like I said, I'm not a politician, and I came up here heinously underprepared. But I just wanted to appeal to you that there's tons of people like me who've never volunteered that want to get involved with their community through this radio station. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And how do you pronounce your last name?
It's Strauk. Strauk.
Strauk.
It's German for small trees, trupps, and bushes.
Thank you. Now I will remember that. Were there questions for Mr. Strauk? Yes?
No, I just have a comment. If you get a radio show, I want to know when it is.
Next is Tom O'Connor. Is Tom O'Connor here? Okay. He may have stepped out. Let him know if he comes back in, but we certainly will have his testimony. Chris Ogo? Is Chris Ogo here? Yes.
Good evening, Honorable Members. I am Chris Ogo, 3321 Autumn Chase Northeast. I am here on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Micronesian Islander Community. And before everything started, I passed around a brief history of our organization. We are seven months old here in the city of Salem. And as I learned about KMUZ, I realized that our organization would really benefit throughout our community. Our organization consists of seven island communities here in the Willamette Valley. And let me just share to the island communities that are with our organization, and a lot of you are probably aware of the island of Guam, the Republic of Marshall Island, which is the Marshallist community here in Willamette Valley, the Commonwealth of the Northern Bahamas, the island of Chuk, the island of Yap, the island of Panape, and the Republic of Palau. A lot of these people have been here, living in the city of Salem and throughout the state of Oregon. Few months, eight months ago, I decided to see how I can get all this community to come together so we can at least see what we can do to help each community. And by assisting or, as you deliberate, to consider whether you will support KMUZ, I encourage that, please, think of it, and it's a one-time deal, like what they said, and it will benefit a lot of people, especially people in our community too. And I encourage everyone to really think about it. It's a one-time request, and I believe that with that request, and if you adopt that and provide that appropriation to KMUZ, it will really help. And one thing that I want to share in our culture, that, because I brought some of the faces of Micronesians with me, please, can you just stand so they can see how Micronesians look like? Here they are. And part of our culture...
Welcome.
Part of our culture is you cannot just speak without allowing the elders to speak. So I asked my vice chair to please come with me and just share a bit. It's already blinking, so... Good evening, City Council.
Good evening.
My name is Raitzani. Before I moved to the beautiful city of Salem, I lived in Monmouth, and then moved to Salem, worked for the THS, and retired. I lived in, again, the beautiful city of Salem for almost 20 years. I support the KMUZ radio station. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming to speak. Are there questions? Thank you very much. I may not pronounce this name correctly. Put the glasses on, maybe, but maybe not. There's Justin King, and just above that name, I can't read it. Can you take this down?
Kate King.
Kate King? Kate King?
Anyone close to that?
Okay. Well, perhaps Justin King is here to speak?
Not that he is.
No. Well, they're, both names are sort of together on this. All right. We'll move on to Peter Burghel. Welcome. You probably know that you have three minutes. At the end of two minutes, the amber light will be on, and then when the red light comes on, the three minutes is up.
Yeah, I've heard rumors to that effect.
I know. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Peter Burghell. I live at 1850 Saginaw Street in Salem. And I just wanted to bring one concern that I had to the council regarding the opposition that I've heard to the KMUZ request. And I think it's a sad commentary on the state of public discourse in our town, when those who are trying to bring a new and useful resource to our community are slurred with what is intended to be almost a curse word for trying to help their neighbors. It just doesn't seem right to me. The request before the council for the $13,000 for KMUZ's transmitting tower has been called socialist, as though they were about the worst thing that could possibly be said about something. You know, it's almost like a curse word. But I was realizing socialism means combining resources from all the members of the community to support all the members of the community and to meet their needs. And it's something we do all the time. If any of the people who have been using that word in a slurring fashion about this are here in the council chambers, they got here on a street that was paid for in just the same way as we're asking that the KMUZ tower should be financed. And I couldn't help but notice that every presentation that was made here this evening was dependent upon a socialist funding mechanism, at least in part, in the same way. So I think we ought to, you know, get away from trying to denigrate something by calling it that. Other examples of things that we do that way are not only the streets, but the police, the parks, the sewers, the water system, the schools, the public library. Heard all about all that tonight. And we do that all the same way, as we want to fund this. The radio station offers the Salem community a lot of benefits, and Karen Holman explained what many of those were. And therefore, I think it's reasonable for the organizers to request that the public, which will unquestionably benefit from the radio station, should shoulder some of the expense. And as you heard, they've already raised a good deal more than this. So I think it's quite a reasonable thing. And it is true that not every Salem resident will want to take advantage of KMUZ or its offerings. But it's just like we put street signs on every street, although most of us will never get to that street and read it. But it benefits the people who live there and the people who want to get there. And in the same way, I think it's very appropriate that the council should provide the additional funding for KMUZ's transmitter. So I want to thank the council for your time this evening. If you have any questions.
Are there questions for Mr. Burghell? Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming tonight. Dan Motley is next on the list. Mr. Motley, I know you know the three-minute rule.
About the talking traffic light?
Yes.
Got it. I have very little to say tonight. I hope I can fit it into three minutes. Quickly, I was here two weeks ago. I'm glad that all these folks showed up to counteract what I had to say from two weeks ago. I'm not sure that I need to repeat it, but what the heck. This is not a, KMUZ is not a government service. It's not government-owned. It shouldn't be government-supported. It's a community radio station. Unlike stop signs, streets, police, every other thing that Mr. Burghell mentioned, those are all government services. Of course, we pay for them. The radio station is not a government service. I sent each of you an email within the last day. I raised five substantive arguments, if you will, about why this funding should not be approved, based on funding source, based on budget level, and based on a few other questions that I have. I hope that the council will not take action on this tonight, but rather will defer it for two weeks and take that opportunity to review their business plan. And if I may say so, see if some of my questions that I emailed to you can be answered via that business plan. Our first speaker tonight discussed that this was an opportunity for investment. I agree. One of my questions is, why is Salem the only one that's being afforded the opportunity of this investment? Why not Marion County, Polk County, Benton County, Lynn County? Why not Jervis? Why not Brooks? Why not Woodburn? Why not Stateon? Why not Mill City? Why not Albany? I can go on. I don't know whether to feel damned or blessed, because we've been asked for this investment opportunity. I'd like you to look at the tape over the next two weeks of tonight's presentation. The second speaker used two words that are important, were important to pay attention to. One was she described the organization as a business. Second, she discussed that they have competitors. It wasn't my understanding that the community radio was going to compete with anybody. One of the things that I mentioned in my email was that I'm severely disappointed that the group didn't approach any of our educational institutions to make this venture an educational The chance for people to learn, to get credit, to grow into this as a business. The chance for people to learn, to get credit, to grow into this as a business. Exactly what, you know, number four mentioned. He, his guess was there was 17 cents per person. I didn't come prepared to pay 17 cents, but I'll gladly leave a dollar up here for someone from KMUZ to pick up. Leave my taxes and water and sewer fund alone, though. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for Mr. Motley? Well, thank you for coming down. We appreciate your appearance. Brad Morrison? No, please. Brad Morrison is our next speaker. You have three minutes. When the amber light comes on, you're at the end of two minutes, and then the red light comes on at the end of three.
Thank you. My name is Brad Morrison. I live in West Salem, Dan Clemsworth. I just came here to stand in opposition to the funding of this radio station based on a few factors, primarily financial in nature. I don't believe that this time in our economy is a wise idea to be expending money in any fashion that isn't absolutely necessary. I don't see us pulling out of this current decline for quite some time, so I think it's unwise to move financially in any direction that isn't just absolutely essential. Secondly, I don't have a problem with the radio station. It sounds like a great idea, but I don't see that this radio station is incapable of raising the funding that they're seeking. Simple math says to me that 10,000 people contributing $1.30 would come up with their $13,000 they need for their radio tower. I'm sure they're going to have a much greater listenership than, you know, 10,000 people. I mean, Salem is what, over 100,000 strong here, so I'm sure they're going to reach a much broader spectrum of people than that. So, and constitutionally speaking, I, there's a number of constitutional avenues I could go down, but that would take way too long and that light would be burning off that stand, so I'll just let it go at that.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there questions? Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming this evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. I didn't come with a prepared text, but I am a member of the Board of Directors of the Friends of the Grand Theater. The Grand Theater receives some money through the hotel tax fund, and I really want to talk from an economic development perspective. A community radio station is going to greatly enhance the knowledge and accessibility of the arts community in the city of Salem to all of the city of Salem residents. As a member of the Board of the Grand, I find a lot of people in the city don't know much about the Grand Theater, what we're doing. The Statesman Journal has dramatically reduced their entertainment coverage, so it's harder and harder for the city to understand what's going on in our own community. I find that many of the people in Salem that I talk to aren't even aware of all of the arts and cultural events that happen in the city of Salem, and there is limited place for us to learn these things. I think a community radio station can provide extensive coverage of the arts and will provide extensive coverage of the arts, including interviews with the artists, live performances on the air, entertainers coming to town, interviews of local performers, and, and a tremendous exposure of the wonderful art scene that exists in this city. And there's a critical mass. When the city of Salem supports its own arts community, we become known as a community that has a great arts legend, and then it becomes a city more attractive to visit. And when people come and visit Salem, they spend their time in hotels and in restaurants. So that would generate a lot of money for the city and also benefit many of the organizations that we support through the hotel tax. So I feel that there's a heartbeat of the city that can be focused, and can focus around a station or a resource like KMUZ, and a whole lot can happen that you, you wouldn't even imagine if we had such a resource. And as for funding things that aren't government services, you know, we put city money, if I'm not mistaken, into things like Sedcor, where the tremendous benefits go to private industry. Sure, there's some tax money and revenue involved, but the greatest benefits are private, private business people. This is an organization primarily run by volunteers. It's run by the city. This is something that we're creating ourselves, and if the city of Salem puts in a few dollars, like we do all these other things that we do in the city, I think that, you know, it's a small amount of money they're asking for, and I think the tremendous, tremendous benefits to the entire community could happen. So I just thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Are there questions? All right, thank you. I would like to take a moment to please remind everyone in the audience that we do ask you to refrain from applause or cheers or other motions of support for a particular speaker. We try to allow everyone to speak their voice and to be heard with respect. So please refrain from any further applause or any other indication of support as a person finishes their, their presentation. The next person to speak is Paul Jaudas.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
Counselors. My name is Paul Jaudas. I live at 850 East Street Northeast. I'm in Chuck Bennett's district, and I'm here representing Americans for Prosperity, Marion County. First, I'd like to remind the city council tonight that with just the items on the agenda, you've increased your city spending by $1,163,433. That's just on tonight's agenda. Many taxes and fees are going up. Many small amounts equal big dollars. I do not have an issue with a new radio station coming to Salem. I welcome the, the challenge. I do have an issue with the city council using citizen tax dollars to make a donation to this effort. If you do this, you are taking away my right to choose. You are forcing every taxpayer of Salem to contribute, whether they want to or not. If you take this money, you reduce the efforts for a balanced budget in a very unstable economy. You would be giving the taxpayer dollars away to an entity that pays no taxes and will not guarantee any job creation. Remember Seaport Air? Please stop this redistribution of wealth and vote no. Please let me have a choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions? All right, no. Thank you very much for coming. Mr. Hammack, please state your name and your address or your ward, and at the end of the two minutes, the amber light comes on, and at the end of three minutes, the red light comes on.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is David Hammack. I live at 1246 Lottie Lane Northwest in West Salem. Before eight years, I produced and hosted the Public Affairs coverage of Alaska elections on statewide television, so I'm very used to the yellow and red lights. I used to run them. I'm the treasurer of the licensee group for KMUZ, but I'm also the new kid on the block. My parents live in town. They're old and ailing, and so I've moved here to help them and got involved. I want to say a couple of things, because most important things have been said tonight. First of all, this group, this volunteer group, has overcome enormous adversity in the years of getting this station together. The timing was not excellent to be starting a new nonprofit enterprise. This group also has a commitment to public service, to community service. We asked, we were asked why we weren't dealing with the educational institutions. We've talked to most educational institutions. They're broke because of the current economy. They've not offered us funding, but, but we've talked with Community College, Willamette, WOU. Everybody is delighted at the prospect of working with us in the future and placing students on the air. We intend to pursue those activities as a priority. We would be, we have worked with other cities in developing relationships. I think the administrator of Turner would be ecstatic to give us money if he had any. I think he'd even quoted saying that. We will not turn down offers from other communities, but we live, most of us, almost all of us live in Salem. That's where our studio is. This will be the focus of our activity. Whether or not we're funded is a legitimate question for the council to decide. I mean, you know, you guys are in charge of deciding how we spend the money. We believe we're an eligible entity, as worthy as any other 501(c)(3), and we think this is a worthy cause. We appreciate the consideration and trust you to make a decision that you can live with, and that'll be good for the citizens. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Are there questions? All right, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming.
Hi again. My name's Ted Campbell. I live in West Salem at 105834th Avenue, and I represent the Polk County AFP. And Councilman Tesler, thank you. I noticed this, I looked at this business plan, and I could see you've put some time into this too, also helping and getting it going, and I, I can see some of your knowledge in there, I believe, over the years. But $13,000 you want to give away to people. You've given 10,000 to the airlines, plus landing fees that you gave them, and you're going to give 250,000. That's almost $300,000 that the city's giving away that we don't have, and our taxpayers have to do it. In the business plan, it talks about underwriting. Underwriting, according to Black's Law Dictionary, which I think they just gave you a copy, or they'll bring you a copy, says you're selling stock to make a profit. That's what underwriting is. Is that right, city attorney? He does have the, that there, but it says it sells stock for profit.
That might be one meaning.
There's two meanings in there, and both of them mean to make a profit. And as far as I know, Black's Law Dictionary is the one most lawyers follow. We need to stop throwing money away. We don't propose a radio station, but they haven't asked the other communities for money. They say that this is the hub of it, but in their business plan, it says it's going to also be broadcasting those communities about those communities. So they need to put their share up, or you need to make this a loan to them where they pay it back. We've got to quit giving our money away. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Are there questions? Councilor Tesler?
Sir, you are mistaken in your accusation that I wrote this business plan. I've had nothing to do with this business plan. I have no part of this business plan.
I didn't mean that as accusation. I thought it was good, and I thought you'd put some influence on it.
I did not.
Okay, I apologize.
They did this. KMUZ did this, and they are the ones that should preserve your praise.
It is a good business plan, but...
Thank you, and I'm sure they'll be happy to know that. I had nothing to do with it.
Okay, thank you.
Are there questions? All right, I believe that that is the list of those who signed up for Agenda Item Three. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak?
I would.
Yes, all right. And state your name and address or ward, please, and we'll get that on the list here.
Okay. My name is Joseph Lafore. I didn't plan to speak. I live at 4330 Myrtle Avenue. I think that KMUZ is going to be a wonderful thing for the community. I'm really sad to see some of the objections that are going on. I, I worked at the state hospital a long time, and I think some of the people have other issues, better should put it. But, and so what I'm thinking is, I'm hoping people that are rational in here will look at the benefit of the money that you can make, just like what the person said there earlier there, about how just on the radio, the advertising, like you said, with the flag thing that's going on for the military, that more people would know about it, therefore for all these events for the city, you would have more people and more revenue. But it saddens me that, to see people act like that, that, I think with the other agenda, it's like a, like, I'd like to see people putting out love, you know, more for other people, but it's like a different energy that's coming from them that it's very sad to see. But I hope to, to see the kids, I want to make this fast, that play music around the community. Teach guitar. They don't have a place to really put their efforts out there. And there are a lot of good kids trying to get their bands together. This is an opportunity for them to get their music out and heard and have a little pride. If you see how many kids are running around here with nothing to do, or they have nobody to help them, to learn to maybe be a disc jockey like this gentleman here from Shamaketa. You know, the good Lord, for me, you know, I think would want to see people helping other people to, you know, be able to have some pride in their life. But it saddens me to see shirts like that, you know, looking, you know, that I get. But anyway, forgive folks for that, and I hope you look at the good that it will do for the community, and it is a very good idea. But anyway, thank you for your time, and God bless you all.
Thank you. Could you spell your name for me, please, so I get that down?
L.E. capital F.O.R.E. L.E. capital F. It's J.O.S.E.P.H.
I know. Yeah. Got it. Thank you very much. Were there questions? All right, thank you. Was there, I believe another gentleman wanted to speak, some other people? Good evening. Please state your name and address or your ward.
My name is John Glass. I actually live in Dallas, and I'm hopefully going to be in the Signal area. I'm a broadcast engineer by trade. I specialize in non-commercial radio stations. I currently take care of a radio station owned by the Yematilla Indians out past Pendleton. And I could tell you that small community radio stations provide a very important role to communities, not just a specialty community like an Indian reservation, but from anywhere from a small town like Bend, like Bend, KPOV and Bend Community Radio has been very effective at working on community events, working closely with League of Women Voters to broadcast voter debates, or candidate debates, voter forums. And, you know, these are very well listened to, and they get a lot of good feedback from the community on these type of broadcasts, and they even get involved with broadcasting sporting activities like the Elks Games live on KPOV, and they stream it live on the web, too. And it's actually one of those popular things they do. I'm kind of shocked at the level of vitriol from some of the people opposing this relative drop in the bucket financially to the taxpayers of the area here. I mean, 17 cents is really, like the student from Shamaketa said, literally is, you know, you can find it in your seat cushions and your couch at home. So I would really like the rationality to take hold here among the members of the council and see that this is something that, for a very small, excuse me, investment, will provide great dividends to the city of Salem and the surrounding communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you spell your last name, please?
G.L.A.S.S.
G.L.A.S.S.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Would you like to speak? Yes, all right. I believe that there's another person at the podium. Did you want to speak?
Yes, I would.
Uh-huh.
My name is Kate Jaudas. I live with Paul Jaudas in Ward One. When KMUZ originally came and asked for money, the city attorney said that it was illegal for the city to give them money, and I'd like to know how that's changed.
The original request was for TOT funding. There are restrictions placed on that money in the Salem City Charter, and this comes from a different source of funding.
I see. Thank you.
All right, yes.
Hello, my name's Rick Quenden. I'm a volunteer for KMUZ. I live at 6364 Fruitland Road outside the city limits. The opportunity to volunteer has brought me to bring my efforts into the city of Salem, and I see KMUZ as a strong catalyst that's going to support the community of Salem and the Mid-Willamette Valley, as is demonstrated by some interest... the Mid-Wilamette Valley, as is demonstrated by some interest from people from Dallas as well as myself. So, I think that's just a small reflection of the kind of interest that it will draw and bring to Salem, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Could you spell your last name for me, please?
Quendon. Q.U.E.N.D.U.N.
D.E.N.
D.U.N.
D.U.N. Thank you very much for their questions? All right. Okay. Let's see. A gentleman there. I think if you want to speak, just come and line up at either one of the podiums. Okay. Yes, sir?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Mark Fancy. I live at 1299 Alberta Avenue East in Monmouth. I'm here speaking on behalf of KMUZ for a couple of selfish reasons. First of all, I'm a, something of a 40-plus-year obsessive music collector, and I'd love to be able to share my love for music with people over the radio, hopefully by having a show someday. I've been told I have a good voice for radio. I know I have a good face for radio, so that... Secondly, and more importantly, I am the one-man community development department for the City of Monmouth, and working in a small town, I wear a lot of hats. I do land use planning, transportation planning, parks planning, grant writing, website development, economic development, events planning, and most importantly, I'm, as regards to this matter, I'm probably the closest thing to a public information officer that the City of Monmouth has. I'm constantly trying to get the word out to our community about our successes, what are upcoming events, things that we should look forward to, meetings, things that we should be proud of, and I struggle mightily with the lack of media outlets available in a small community. And so, for that reason, I would hope that you would lend your support to KMUZ. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there questions? All right. Thank you. Ms. Zeigun?
Leslie Zeigun. I reside in Brad Nanki's ward. How many of you in this room, would you raise your hand? How many of you lived in Salem in 1996? Would you raise your hand? How many of you were affected by the floods that we had? Okay? I remember that well. Roger Gerdrich was our mayor, and he was absolutely frantic to get information out to the citizens of Salem. He called up to Portland. He kept calling. He kept calling, and all the information that he could get was what was happening in Portland. He could not get the information to our citizens, and I was delighted, if we have a community radio station, of the potential of safety, among other things, safety potential to notify our citizens. They know that they would have a reliable source to learn what to do in case of an emergency.
All right. Are there questions for Ms. Zeigun? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hi. I'm Tim King. I live at 3912 Pringle Creek Court, Salem, Oregon. And I've lived in Salem all my life, and I was born here, and I just wanted to address a couple, two things. One, I was a musician and a, when I was a younger man, and a lot of our friends were musi, a lot of my friends were musicians. We had lots of bands and stuff going on, but we never really could, you know, crystallize things the way things are now. I'm so amazed at the young musicians in there and the places like the Ike Box and other places that I can't think of right now, and the wonderful community of music that we have in Salem is amazing compared to 15, 20 years ago. It stuns me, and there's just an amazing amount of talent here, literary, music, and others, that I think would benefit greatly from having a radio station to broadcast their music and views. And the second thing I wanted to say was about all the volunteer stuff that we heard about earlier. What a great, how would you like to be able to come in and say, "Look, we have, we are looking for volunteers for this," we're not, and be told, "We're going to do this for free for you. We're going to broadcast this to the entire Salem area and beyond," and that you're looking for volunteers? I mean, how great is that? How many people would love to have that? And thirdly, I just want to say that, as I said before, I've been a citizen of Salem all my life, and I love this town, and I'm proud of this town, and it's wonderful the things that Karen's doing, and I know, I know in my heart that KMUZ is going to happen. It may happen sooner, it may happen later, but I would love, I for one, would love to be able to say that our city council helped it happen. That's all. Thanks.
Questions for Mr. King? All right. Thank you. Looks like maybe we have one more speaker, and then we will probably be moving on. Okay. Yes, welcome. Please state your name and your address or your ward.
My name is Joyce Axelson, and I'm in Chuck Bennett's ward, and I thank you for this opportunity. Hey, I'd never heard of KMUZ before, but I think it's a wonderful thing, and I can't see why we can't all get together, both sides. Let's have some fundraisers and get this thing going, and we don't have to use the money that maybe would be costing, you know, taxpayers money. Hey, I'd work with them, whatever ways we could have to get together and do this. I'll volunteer.
Thank you. Could you please repeat your name for me?
Joyce Axelson, 2255 Nebraska Avenue Northeast.
Would you spell your last name, please?
A-X-E-L-S-O-N.
Oh. Thank you very much. Any questions? All right. I believe that that has completed the people who were signed up or indicated that they wanted to speak under public comment item number three. I think Counselor Bennett, did you...
Yes. I have a motion, Madam Mayor. I move the city council suspend its rules and proceed to item 11.2 on our Agenda Counselors' Items in order to take up this issue.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Tesler that we suspend the rules and move to item... Will you give me the number again, please?
11.2A.
Thank you. 11.2A.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
We clearly have had a lot of interest in this issue. A lot of folks have been here for over two hours. I think it just as a courtesy, they should get a chance to see the vote on it.
Fine. Thank you. Are there other comments? All right. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. We'll move to item 11 point, 11.2A. Counselor Tesler, would you like to make a motion regarding your Counselor's item?
Thank you. I would. I move that the city council authorize the city manager to enter into a grant agreement with the Salem folklore community for $13,000 from the city's general fund contingency account to be used by the board of the KMUZ community radio for the partial purchase price of a radio antenna in exchange for services described below.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Tesler and seconded by Counselor Dickey to move for, to direct the city manager to enter into an agreement with KMUZ for funding from the city's contingency fund. Is there discussion?
Off the question.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Will the nays please say their names or raise their hands? Okay. Nanki, Clem Cannon, and Peterson are nay.
Vails for lack of majority.
All right. That indicates then that the vote is four, four people for and four people against, so the motion dies for lack of the majority. Okay. Do we want to take a stretch for a minute, and then we'll proceed back to the council agenda? Consent calendar. Oh, I'm not sure. Is Laura coming back?
I don't think so.
All right.
Okay.
All right. All right. We're going to re-adjourn. I'm... (laughter) Re-convene. Thank you very much. Oh, it isn't even that late. It just seems like it. All right. Counselor Bennett, I believe the next thing on the item is a consent calendar.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move the consent calendar with additions and deletions with the following polls. 4.3D by Counselor Dickey, and then Counselor Cannon would like to record no votes on 4.2A and 4.2C.
And if I may, Mayor, there's a scriptener's error on the staff report for 4.3G. The three classifications that would be adjusted, that adjustment will actually happen January 1st, 2012, and not January 1st, 2011.
All right.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Cannon to accept the consent calendar with the exception of the poll of 4.3D by Counselor Dickey, and we should register the no votes on 4.2A and 4.2C of Counselor Cannon and the scriptener's error on 4.3G. All right. Let's see. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yes. I just would like to declare a potential conflict of interest on 4.3D, the agreement with the city or the Salem Kaiser School District. My wife is an employee of them. It should have no financial impact on her position. I feel I could be unbiased in my decision, so I will be participating.
Thank you. All right. Now, with those... Madam Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Dickey?
Yes. I am going to recuse myself on 4.3H. My spouse is employed by the Transit District, and this would have a direct impact on them. And also, on 4.3D, I just want to declare I am employed by the school district but not anywhere remotely related to this program, so it's just a potential conflict of interest, but shouldn't be a problem.
All right. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, Mayor. May I just ask a question for the deputy city manager? 4.3A is not on the agenda. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That was polled.
Oh.
Did you have it on your deletions?
We did.
Yep. Okay.
We did.
Yes. It is, it is on here as removed. 4.3A. All right. All right. Is there any further discussion regarding the consent calendar?
Yeah.
No. All right. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of accepting the consent calendar with the polls and deletions and recusals, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. We will then go to special orders of business to address the polled agenda items. Let's see. Counselor Dickey, would you like to, I believe, would you like to make a motion regarding the item 4 point, let's see here, I don't have enough fingers for this, 4.3D?
Thank you. Yes, I'll move staff recommendation.
It's been moved by Counselor Dickey and seconded by Counselor Nanki to approve the staff recommendation on 4.3D. All those in favor? I'm sorry. Yes?
Yes. Thanks. I just wanted to make a comment about this. We've, we've had this agreement several years now, and I just, reading through the staff report, I can't remember if this was in here last year. If it was, I probably made a comment about it, but I thought it was interesting on the second page where it, there's a statistic quoted that effective after-school programs can yield a benefit to cost ratio to taxpayers and crime victims, $1.87 to $5.29 for every dollar spent. I think that's a great return on an investment in the youth of our community, so I'm very, very happy to support this, concur with Ms. Lemmons who testified earlier about this, and just wanted to highlight that because it really is a cost savings to our community as well as an investment in our future.
Thank you very much. All right. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. And Counselor Bennett, are there other items that were polled for that need to be considered?
No, Madam Mayor. I think we're okay on that. We could go then to information reports and see what we've got there.
Wonderful. Information reports, and are there questions by any counselors? Counselor Cannon, and then Counselor Nanki.
I'd like just to thank staff very much for 7J, which is the hearings officer's decision in getting this on the agenda for tonight for notice. This was the situation where there is a private school following directly on the heels of a public school on Summer Street, if I'm not mistaken, but this was something that staff had to really take an extra effort to get done in the timely manner so this school can be available for opening, and so I greatly appreciate that. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Nanki, and then Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wasn't able to get to my email. I had other things going on in the last 24 hours. I just wanted to, on the record, verify because we did receive an email from Morningside wanting to have us potentially pull an item for public hearing, and I was informed that there was another email, basically retracting said request.
That is the case. They did retract that and asked that it not be pulled.
Excellent. Thank you.
Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have two things. I want to join Counselor Cannon in praising staff for their good work on the added item dealing with the charter school location in my ward, but I also want to add that I hope in the future developers will take advantage of what really is an excellent system of consultation with neighborhood groups. In fact, I think this is an example I hope is codified and presented to developers on how not to do this and how to create a situation that could well have reversed and left them without a, an opening, an opening day if it weren't for the good work of our staff. This was absolutely ham-handed, and I'm really disappointed. The developer involved is experienced and should know better. So, I hope you'll, I hope you'll share that with him, Vicki, and really, I would share this with other developers because this was so poorly done. I continue still to get emails from the neighborhood groups saying, "Gee, we want this, but my gosh, this is a terrible way for people to handle themselves and to handle neighborhood groups and basic planning issues." This really was the worst I've seen done in the past four years. Then, Madam Mayor, I'd like to...
Yes.
...make a motion regarding the chicken coop licensing and inspection program. I would like to refer the requests from Barbara Palermo that we heard in public testimony and received by email to staff.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Cannon to refer the information that we received earlier this evening in Barbara Palermo's testimony to staff. Is there a discussion? Counselor Nanki?
I just, in the interest of full disclosure, I am one of the chicken license holders, so...[1794.12][1794.12](laughter) I will be speaking with the Ethics Board to see...
Counselor Bennett, I believe, and Cannon seconded the motion to refer the chicken coop issue to staff. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. See where we are. Oh, Counselor Clem?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Thank you. With regard to the information report on the environmental action plan, there are two items on our agenda. One is last year's report and the current year's report, or at least what the action plan is. Just for those folks at home or not aware of what the Salem Environmental Action Plan is, it's entering its third year. It is, we don't have a sustainability plan like some communities have, but we have one that's more directly targeted at reducing our environmental impact and really saving money. It's a cost-savings-oriented action plan, and so we're lightening the load as best we can on how, what it takes to operate the city and the impact we have in the environment with this environmental action plan. And I'm very pleased that staff has done such a good job with this. We're seeing a 10% reduction in many of the energy areas. We're seeing reduction in waste. We're seeing less water being drained off through leaky pipes. We're seeing city employees who are thinking about using pesticides that are environmentally friendly, a whole array of things that they might have done otherwise. At least we have some sort of way of managing it now. And so really, my thanks goes out to the city employees who, on a daily basis, are thinking of new ways to save money and to lessen the impact on the environment. So, boy, if you haven't looked at the environmental action plan before, it's our answer to sustainability, and I think it's a better one because it's saving money as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Nanki?
Yeah, and I'd just like to follow up on that because, for the most part, environmental improvement is also cost savings. And when you can find those, it's truly a win-win, so commending staff for excellent environmental performance as well.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. I should have noted the unfinished business, item six. We have no unfinished business now. Just want you to know which base we're on here. We're now going to item 10, public comment for other than agenda items, and I believe we do have someone signed up. Ted Campbell. I apologize. We were to have done the reading of the ordinances, first ordinance, second ordinance. I do apologize. If anyone is leaving the room and wondered what happened, we'll now, we'll know, we'll now deal with ordinances. All right. First reading. We'll now move to the first reading of ordinances. Will the recorder please read the title?
Ordinance Bill Number 2911 relating to the Salem Downtown Economic Improvement District amending SRC 44.005015040050 and 055, adding SRC 44.023 and repealing SRC 44.030.
Counselor Bennett?
I move the staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Nanki to move the staff recommendation. Is there a discussion? All those in favor, say yes. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay votes are Cannon... Oh, all right. Thank you. Motion carries. And I believe our next agenda item is a second reading. Will the recorder please read the title and take a roll call vote?
Ordinance Bill Number 2511 approving a major amendment to the West Salem Urban Renewal Plan. Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Tesler is now absent. Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Claussen is absent. Vicky?
Aye.
Counselor Thomas?
Aye.
Counselor Cannon?
Aye.
Counselor Clem?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Now we get to go to public comment number, item 10, and Ted Campbell has signed up. Mr. Campbell still here?
Still left.
He's gone. All right. Well, I apologize to him. And we have no new business, and I believe that that completes the business before this council, and we're adjourned. Okay. We do that. Very good job.